Twenty-eighth meeting of the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Item three is public comment. For public comment, by policy, we allow 21 minutes, up to 20 minimum minutes and up to three minutes per speaker. And the order of the speakers is the order in which they show up on the sheet in front of us and in which they raise their hand on the online version. And so we go back and forth. We start with the in-person and then we go to the online until we have met our 21 minutes. So with that, I think that's everything. Mr. Milano will keep track of the 21 minutes. I'll keep track of the three minutes as soon as I get my timer on here. Let's see, stopwatch. Yep, that's it. So do we have anyone here for citizen speak? I don't know if we have anyone signed up on the sheet. I don't see anyone jumping to the front in person. So let's go to our online version to see if anyone, if anyone wants to participate in citizen speak, just put your hand up. Put your hand up online. Going once, going twice. Don't see any hands there. Last chance in person for citizen speak. And looks like we don't have anyone for citizen speak. All right.
We better be done by eight thirty.
What's that?
We better be done by eight thirty.
All right. Well, we'll charge through it. We'll charge through it. Item four is discussion approval of increasing the cap on the senior property tax volunteer program from $1,500 per participant to $2,000 per participant. And we have with us our Council on Aging Director, Christine Stanton, to talk about the program and to talk about the increase. So Christine, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the board. As the Town's Council on Aging Director, I have the pleasure of administering the Senior Tax Work Off program, which allows homeowners 60 years of age or older to work in various town departments and receive a property tax credit of $1,500. Last month, Governor Healey announced many tax cuts to benefit older adults, one being an increase to $2,000 as the maximum amount municipalities may now allow homeowners to reduce their property taxes to minimize the financial impact of their property tax. The Select Board has previously approved 25 volunteer slots. We currently have 12 participants in the program. So the associated cost is $18,000, 12 participants times 1,500. An increase to $2,000, to a $2,000 credit would be $24,000, 12 times 2, for a difference of $6,000. If we were to fill all 25 slots, the total reduction amount would be $50,000, 25 times Currently, the income guidelines for participants in the program allow a maximum income of $45,000 for a single household and $60,000 a year for a couple. And these are in line with the current guidelines for LIHEAP, which is the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program and various other assistance programs in the state. So I feel they are in, we are in line with that. I also had a discussion with Chief Appraiser Charlie O'Shea, who told me he runs other tax abatement programs for Milton seniors. And he is adjusting his amounts. He's putting in a cost of living adjustment of 6.5% to the income levels. So if we applied the same 6.5% COLA adjustment to the income levels for the Senior Tax Work Off, the one-person household income would increase the maximum to $47,925 and a two-person household would increase to $63,900. So for participants in the program, the calculation is based on the minimum wage. So currently in Massachusetts, it's $15 an hour. As of January 1, it's going up to $16.25. So participants would need to work 123 hours at 16 and a quarter an hour to achieve the $2,000 credit. And I respectfully request the Senior Tax Work Off program credit be increased to 2,000 and a 6.5% COLA adjustment be applied to the maximum income guidelines. So I'm happy to answer any questions and I appreciate all you do for the town.
Thank you, Ms. Stanton. Comments or questions? Mr. Wells.
Just for the purpose of discussion, I'll make a motion to increase the cap on the Senior Property Tax Volunteer Program from 1,500 per participant to 2,000.
I'll second.
Thank you. And I'll just add, as a friendly amendment, I think we also have a request to increase the COLA to 6.5%.
Accept that.
6.5%. Okay. And so the friendly amendment's been accepted. Other comments or questions? Mr. Wells.
I have one, Mr. Chair. So there is one group that recently, this recently came to my attention, and I don't think we have to add this tonight, but maybe Mr. Milano could work on it. I think we're all familiar with the Exorify unit that gives yeoman's hours free for as many years as I can remember. Well, three of them are now in this category, in the over 65, including the commander, Paul Hopkins. So I think it might be prudent for us to, in their case, many of the hours that they do are sometimes on the coldest, wettest nights of the year, as you know, that we look into including them into the Senior Tax Work Off.
I think, I think we can do that. Unless there's any objection.
All right. So I'll make it as a, I'll amend my motion to include them in the Senior Tax Work Off.
I think we should probably look, make sure it's permissible under the program.
All right, I agree, I agree. So let's do that.
Yeah. Other comments or questions?
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Zoll.
Just for anyone who's watching at home, if they're interested in joining this program, would you like to share quickly how they could be in touch with you or to learn more?
Yes. The application is available on the Town of Milton website under the Council on Aging page. In the left-hand column, there's a tab, Senior Tax Work Off Application. And it's got all the guidelines and an application form. It would need to be submitted before the end of this year because the hours worked start January 1 and end October 31st. So as I mentioned, we only have 12 current participants, so we could have 13 more, so...
To grow. Great. Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Bradley, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. First, thank you, Ms. Stanton, for all you do for the town and for the seniors in our town. It's a pleasure to work with you on a monthly basis through my other job. I'm wondering how difficult the application is and if it's something that seniors might need help with. I'd be happy to sit with seniors if that makes a difference for those that can't really figure it out. I'd be happy to give my time later this month if you're getting calls and folks are kind of struggling with the paperwork or understanding how to do it.
Sure. Thank you. It is fairly straightforward. It's just, you know, proof of domicile and your latest tax income return. So it is fairly, but...
Oh, so it's very easy.
Yes.
Okay, great. So please, all those out there in TV land and in the town, spread the word because we would like to see that filled. So thank you.
Yep. People can call the Council on Aging and ask for me or, as I mentioned, go to the website and download the application and bring it in 10 Walnut Street.
Other comments or questions? Is there a better way to publicize this? Do what do we, is there more we can do to publicize it for our seniors, I guess? One question.
I've run notices in the Milton Times. It's on our, we have a weekly e-newsletter, which goes out every Monday morning to members, and we have a monthly print newsletter that we put it in.
Maybe we can put it on our website, particularly since it's, the applications are...
I could put it on the town, we could put it on an email blast for the town.
Yeah, since the applications are due by the end of the year, this is, it would be timely to say, look, this is the time of the year to, if you want to start January 1, this is the time of the year to apply. So maybe we, Mr. Zoll.
I wondered too, Mr. Chair, if we could ask the town moderator to put a plug in at the start of town meeting. A lot of folks that are in town meeting might be interested in either themselves or knowing someone that would be able to be interested to participate.
Yep. And I think that's a good idea.
Yes, excellent.
Senior, something that I'll have to try to remember.
I'll take a note for myself.
I'll try to remember. We have a pre-meeting on Friday. I just, if I can, let me get my big tabs so I remember. All right, sorry. Other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we have a motion that has been made, there's the big tabs. Motion that's been made and seconded. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Stanton. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support.
And good luck for the program and I hope it, I hope we spend more money on this program in the coming year.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good night, Chris.
Item five, discussion update. This is Claudia Green, Milton Welcoming Haitian Neighbors to Discuss Their Work in the Community. So is Ms. Green here and other members of Milton Welcoming Haitian Neighbors? And if you could, if you could either introduce yourselves or, Ms. Green, if you can introduce everyone, if anyone speaks, please try to talk into the microphone because otherwise they won't be able to hear you, other than us, they won't be able to hear you. So if the floor is yours, Ms. Green.
Where's the secret camera?
Right there.
There's many, so you have to, you have to, depends on which one is hitting you. So always assume you're on camera.
Okay.
The one you care about's in the red coat.
Okay. Well, good evening. Thank you so much. So we are the recently formed Haitian welcoming, excuse me, Milton Welcoming Haitian Newcomers. My name is Claudia Green and I live at 514 Elliott Street. And I am going to have others introduce themselves, but I'll just say, in my day job, I am the Executive Director of English for New Bostonians, a local organization in Boston, and it's a pleasure to be here in my home community, working on an issue of such global and local importance. So quick introductions.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Robinson. I live at 71 Houston Ave.
Good evening. Thank you for having us.
My name is Colleen Desiree. I live at 14 Union Ave and I am the Executive Director of the Association of Haitian Women in Boston.
Welcome, Colleen.
Hello. My name is Pat Gallivan. I live at 310 Elliott Street in Milton and I'm a retired municipal and state employee.
Oh, wow. Nice to have you, Pat. Nice to have you back.
Chris Navin, 34 Cliff Road in Milton.
It's a familiar face to us, Mr. Navin. Nice to have you.
Great. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. So why are we here? We are here to share information about the current urgency in Massachusetts as we welcome newly arriving families who are coming from Haiti as well as South and Central America, American countries and the Caribbean. And we want to identify the resources that are helping to identify resources needed, including funds, housing and people. And we want to engage you as the Select Board, as well as clergy, community members and others in this shared effort. So just to provide a little bit of background, and surely you've been reading about this issue in the news, but families are arriving in Haiti, they're fleeing violence, a lack of government infrastructure and poverty. And as you, as you may well know, there are over 7,500 families in shelters right now across the state, including 104 hotels and motels. You may have seen most recently that including the transportation building downtown has been converted into a temporary shelter. So the urge, the need is really urgent. This overwhelming demand is why Governor Healey declared a state of emergency in August, requesting help from the federal government as well as from communities around the Commonwealth. From faith communities, cities and towns and nonprofits and individuals are being asked to step up and help. So we believe that this is imperative for Milton. Milton has previous experience in welcoming refugees and asylumes in this community. We are home to many Haitian Americans and we're also a generous community that really recognizes the value of diversity, equity and inclusion. So what we've done so far is that we have built relationships with local, with nonprofits in our, right here in Boston, including the Immigrant Family Services Institute, which is right in Matapan Square, the Association of Haitian Women, known by its Haitian name in AFAB, which is in Matapan, and the International Institute of New England, which is in downtown Boston but operates across the region. We've gone through training with the International Institute of New England, who, they are actually a resettlement agency, and we've gone through training for how we can support a family here in Milton. We did a survey. We got 82 responses from people here in Milton that are ready to help and willing to step up. We held a community meeting and we have already been, before we're matched with a family, we've already been helping to connect volunteers as ESL tutors in local organizations. We've already sent about eight to 10 volunteers. People have done clothing and furniture drives, et cetera. So our goal, the goal of Milton Welcoming Haitian Newcomers is to help one or more Haitian families to get settled and on their feet so that they can fully contribute here in Massachusetts where they are much needed, especially given the local labor market shortages. I want to say, just as a sort of, just as important information, I think that the Haitians that are coming here have all backgrounds. So from those who may have very limited formal education in their home country to those who are professionals. There are teachers, engineers, doctors, college professors arriving here all the time. Most have low levels of English, but, and many, but not all, are getting work authorization. That process is starting to speed up, but it is, it's slow. So here's how we think that Milton can help. We, first, we want, we're trying to raise funds to help for a family's expenses. We started with a goal of $10,000 to $15,000, possibly more as time goes on. And we would ask people to donate to, you can go right on the website at the International Institute of New England. You can just Google Milton Welcoming Haitian Newcomers and it comes right up. And you can donate online or you can also send a check to the International Institute of New England, just marking that it's for Milton Welcoming Haitian Neighbors. And that the donation is tax deductible and it will help cover expenses in the coming year that, for a family. And there's also, you know, that will supplement any assist, cash assistance that would be available through the state as well as income from employment because we are hopefully going to be matched with someone who will have work authorization. So we see this as just providing a launch. So we're great, and I want to say that we're grateful already for the support from the Milton Interfaith, excuse me, Interfaith Clergy Association as well as First Parish. And you'll see on the website, we've already received donations from individuals across the community. So we're thanking folks for their generous support already. The second big item is housing. So for housing a family that we know that will be matched with. This is the greatest barrier here in Milton and across the state, and that is obviously why the shelters are so full. We definitely need long-term solutions and we need a short-term solution now. We're asking community members to consider if they have an in-law apartment, a rental property, a portion of a house that they may not be using, a property that may be owned by a congregation that they belong to, anywhere that is suitable for a family, preferably in walking distance of public transportation, and that you would have a family member of your own live in. We're not asking for free housing, although of course that would be nice, but we are, because we, and we are, we're planning to raise the money to help cover rent. Down the road, we'll need people who can help with tutoring and driving and taking people grocery shopping, sharing a meal, et cetera. That is in the future, hopefully not too distant future. So just, and a note about timing, there are thousands of people that are waiting for housing, so the need is immediate. The, you know, we're trying to work the raising the funds and finding housing, so those two things are interrelated, but the need is immediate. So we ask people to do what they can to step up. And we would ask for a view of the Select Board to consider how the Town of Milton can help, to perhaps pass, you know, make a statement of support of the work and to, any suggestions that you may have, that's what we're here to discuss. And I want to just end here and just open up to questions and answer. And thank you again for having us here and for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Comments or questions from the members? Mr. Zoll.
Thank you, Mr. Zollis. So I just want to, first of all, thank all of you for the extremely generous time that you have committed to this effort. You know, my eyes kept getting bigger as you talked about the trainings that you were going through, the different NGOs that you're working with, the amount of fundraising that you're undertaking. I think this is, I mean, this is the sort of thing that makes a community great, when we, when we can come together and, and really welcome newcomers. I love the name Milton Welcoming Haitian Newcomers. Doesn't quite roll off the tongue, but it really, it does get the message across.
We're getting there.
So I, I'm really grateful for this effort. I, I'm glad that you were able to come here tonight and share the needs. I really hope that the town here, I'm glad that the Milton Times is here to hear this as well, because I think, you know, what better message could we have in our, at our meeting today on Giving Tuesday than a message of folks who are really giving not just their, their time, but their treasure and their talent to make a better future possible for folks that you haven't even met? So I, I think, Mr. Chair, we could consider, you know, a statement of support from the Select Board. I'd be, I'd be happy to draft that if that was something that we were interested in doing. And I'm also curious to think about any resources that we have at the town level that might be eligible for contributing to this effort.
Mr. Zoll, other comments or questions from the members? Mr. Wells.
So Immigration Newcomers is the former, if I'm correct, is the former IIC? Am I correct? The Irish Immigration Center is now called Immigration Newcomers?
No.
No. So you are familiar though with the former IIC?
With RION?
Yes.
That's their name now?
Yes. So I sit on a similar board in Boston where immigration is a big deal, very familiar with the work that Ronnie Millar did over the years. I can't tell you how many people, so many different, including many Haitians that have gone there. One of the benefits there is legal help you get in both finding a path to work and finding a path to permanent residence, which, as you know, becomes, is a huge hurdle to anyone coming here to America. So we are lucky in that. And the other thing that I just want to say, it's Giving Tuesday. So I'm not, I'm saying this to you. You're on the microphone. It's Giving Tuesday.
We both fundraise for a living, so...
So if you want to, if you want to put out your, your website again, as far as where people can donate, because that's a tongue twister, you better go home and practice that like five times a day. I welcome you to do that one more time before you leave here today.
Yes. We would encourage people to just, to go to Milton Welcoming Haitian Newcomers. Then our site is housed on the International Institute of New England's site. They put up a page for us. And again, it's tax deductible and people can make a donation there. And you can, or send a check. And we would also say, you know, to make a donation, and again, really to let us know, I mean, there's not a lot of rental housing, as you know, in Milton. So, but this, you know, this is extremely important, whether we can find housing in Milton or nearby. So any information, any ideas that people have, we'd really welcome that and we'd welcome people to stay in touch. We do have an email address at Milton dot newcomers at gmail dot com. So stay in touch. We will be holding a community meeting on, another community meeting on December 13th. But, and welcome any other comments, questions.
And Ms. Green, just to follow up, is there, is there a domain name for the website? There was Milton Welcoming Haitian Newcomers, but is there a domain name that would be helpful or no?
Yeah, it's...
It's on, it's on the International Institute's website.
Okay. So it's the International Institute...
But I don't, so I don't know the full domain name.
Okay. Someone will get it though if they plug it in, yeah. I didn't know if that would be helpful or not, just to have the domain name and to try to publicize that as well to make it easier.
I think if you Google Milton Welcoming Haitian Neighbors, it pops up.
It'll pop up.
There is a URL that's long.
Yep. Which is why I didn't try to say it, but thank you for the question.
IINE.org is the International Institute of New England, is IINE.org.
Yes.
I'm learning how to do this.
It's, yeah, it's give dot IINE.org campaign, Resettle Together, Milton Welcoming Haitian Newcomers.
That is a mouthful, but they'll, they'll get there. Other comments or questions from the members? Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I was going to say, first of all, I know Claudia from Tucker days and I think it's a wonderful program that you're doing. Could you talk a little bit about when you started and how much you've raised up to now and when you're hoping to, you know, be at the point where you can say, okay, we can find somewhere now and, you know, you have enough money, you've raised the money that you're looking for, where you're at now, when you started?
Yes. I'd like to turn to our treasurer, but we don't have one. Do, we are, in terms of, we've been raising money for about less than two months now. And we have just under $6,000 raised so far.
Very good.
And we are in the process of, I mean, we're working very closely with IINE because they are, they're trying to expand their resettlement operation so that it is community-driven because they do a lot and, but they can only do so much because they have a relatively small staff. So this is an effort to try to extend their reach. And they can provide some support with lots of different basic services, legal services, work services, those kinds of things. And so we're learning from them. And I'm trying to get back to your question, but I'm not used to doing this sort of thing.
You're doing fine.
So we are, we're definitely engaging the community in that process. What else? There was another piece to your question.
Just a timeline and what you were hoping for.
I think we were, we were originally talking about trying to have enough funds to be able to be matched with a family by January. I'm not sure whether we'll be there. We're also in the process of trying to develop a budget because we could be matched with a two-person family, a three-person family. So we're trying to understand the projected costs and there's a lot of data out there to put into a spreadsheet. But it does look like if we get to a point of having about $10,000, we could start to proceed. We would have to continue to fundraise aggressively because the startup costs of first and last month and all that will be challenging.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Wells.
So I take it that's a significant amount of the money, and I'm trying, I'm in the awful spot here, is to raise money to help defray the cost of rents in moving people in?
Yep. We're not expecting somebody to give a free apartment. We are planning to...
You never know. You're only limited by your own imagination.
I can dream.
Other comments or questions?
Okay.
So there was...
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chair. If there was a motion.
No, I don't think there was a motion. I think, I think there was a, there was a, the question is whether, whether do we have a consensus that we should put together a statement? And Mr. Zoll has taken the responsibility to put together a statement. So are we in favor of Mr.?
He did?
He did. He did.
I'll second that.
So, well, no, we, I don't think we need a motion. I think we all agree that we want to put together a statement. We'll commission Mr. Zoll to do it. And we, and at the next opportunity, we have a, a short meeting before town meeting on Monday, but typically that's related to kind of last-minute things before town meeting. So it may be the meeting after that or whenever, whenever we can get it. But, but we'll, we'll get to it in the next, next week or two, it seems to me. And then the question beyond that, so I think we have a consensus on that. Not seeing any, any objection. And then the next question is what else the town can do? And so, you know, we've heard some ideas here. Maybe the, the best thing might be to, beyond your contact with us, is to make sure you're in contact with the town administrator as well, who really has a sense of the, you know, town-wide resources as well. So, so that may be helpful in terms of getting a sense of the full umbrella of things that we might be able to bring to bear on this. Mr. Wells.
So just one more question. You, you know, Matapan Curly has a very large Haitian population as well. And in my time as chief, before I had this job, I was privileged to have a very close relationship with not just the Haitian population in Milton, but also the Haitian population in, in Matapan. And some of the, like St. Angela's, I don't even, it's a new name now, but some of the churches and organizations really have a lot of real ties. Like I went up on Haitian National Radio one day and we did it in Matapan Square and I couldn't believe it, like, does the radio still do here? And it was a, it was just a small building right on Matapan. So one of the things that I've learned from my many years with them was that they really have some very strong connections. And I think it behooves you to have relationships with your neighbors as well because the Haitian, as you know, the Haitian... because the Haitian, as you know, the Haitian community is a very strong, that is here in Massachusetts. I don't know if you know, former state Senator Linda Dorcini, a very strong Haitian American herself, a very strong supporter of the Haitian community and Haitians itself. Those can all help you open doors that, like, she was the first name I thought of when you started to talk tonight. Even though she's no longer in public service, she's in the private sector, and she's still, as I like to always refer to her, as a shaker and a mover. So just one more person you might want to think to have a conversation with.
Other comments or questions? All right. So we have, we have, we'll put together a statement, put together something along those lines, and then try to figure out what other resources. I mean, we've had some contact, but some of the thoughts, some of the initial thoughts that I had, but beyond that, maybe Mr. Milano and any of the members can weigh in on additional thoughts they have, just so you can get a full sense of what we may be able to help with here.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Call them up, your cars will go home on this cold night.
Item six is a discussion approval of a comment letter related to the expanded environmental notification form for the proposed intersection improvements at Route 28 and Chickatobit Road. The public comment deadline is, 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 thank you, December 12th. December 12th. And perhaps we should go to Mr. Milano on this item.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chair. The state filed their expanded environmental notification form this past week with the state triggering AMEPA review. There is a public comment period that.
To restate. The state has filed its expanded environmental notification form with the state for environmental review of the proposed intersection project at 28 and Chickatobit. The roundabout, there is a public comment period that is open until December 12th. Any comments can be submitted through the state's website. We'll post some information on how to do that. Comments are welcome from residents, from other organizations. And one opportunity would be for the Select Board to author its own comment letter and submit something. I had not prepared anything in the packet for review yet. I have talked to the DPW director, I've talked to the town council about putting together, you know, their initial reactions, initial thoughts as to what could go in a comments letter. Happy to take any suggestions now and bring back a draft letter at our next meeting for review and get that submitted prior to this comment deadline. And it's important to comment to keep the town's options open as this project moves forward.
Give Mr. Milano comments or questions from the members, from the members? Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I would say that it's really important to get a comment letter in. So, you know, just talking with the entities that you need to, you know, Chase Berkeley and Town Council and so forth. Important, because we definitely want to get a comment in about this. And what is the process for people that are watching in terms of how long typically a MIPA process can take? Do we have any ideas on that?
I don't have that answer right now. I can certainly follow up with that. But it is, it is a statutory process that these organizations, that any major project with state funding has to go through. There are time limits within the regulations of the statutes, but I don't know them off the top of my head.
They're pretty common. They're very common.
Will there be other opportunities along the way as well to submit comments?
So on the environmental approval process, this is the opportunity now. On the question, and those are, you know, those comments are supposed to be directed to potential environmental impacts of the project. Broader comments about the project itself would be directed to MassDOT, and that would be a separate process, as we well know. But that, this is a specific kind of filing for environmental-related impacts and how the project would address those or not, and what the project needs to do better to address those concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Pardon me. Other comments or questions, Mr. Zoll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Milano, the deadline is the 12th of December, is it?
Correct.
So that, given that that's the date of our next regularly scheduled program, I might suggest that we review a letter on the 4th when we meet prior to. I know it's normally just a quick run of show, but if that works for everyone else, I think that would probably be the right time.
There should be enough time for that on the board.
Yeah, sorry, that was my, that's what I meant.
That's what I thought you meant. I thought you meant that.
Yes, no, sorry. Thanks for clarifying. Yeah, no, I should have said that. By next week, next Monday.
All right. So the plan is to have a draft letter by next Monday. And then, you know, if the members have other comments or additions that they want to make, we could, we could always, we may have to meet on the 11th anyway, before town meeting. So if we could, we could always update the letter on the 11th. Or if we don't have to meet on the 11th, we could always add a short meeting if we need to, in order to get, in order to meet the deadline of the 12th. So why don't we shoot for having a draft letter on the 4th? And then we'll, we'll see if we can get it out. Any other comments or questions on this side? All right. Thank you. Item seven is discussion approval, discussion update approval of the special town meeting articles. We've been through all of these. I understand there is some potential update on Article One, but why don't we go to Mr. Milano for any updates on the articles?
And I'll just, Mr. Chair, I do have an update on Article Seven when we get there.
Yeah, yeah, whatever you have, whatever you have, just tell us.
So Article One, in terms of MBTA Communities Act, there had been some feedback related to the Granite Ave zoning and how that had what was being viewed as a significant amount of units on it. So when looking at it and talking to the planner, we were kicking back and forth ways to reduce that impact on the southern portion of Granite Ave, south of the highway exchange. And one option that is possible is to, by, is to reduce the number of potential units south on Granite Ave South would be to increase the number of units north of the highway at Two Granite Ave. If you'll recall, the zoning right now contemplates up to four and a half stories on Granite Ave South and contemplates, the unit capacity is 530 units currently on the two parcels that make up the Granite Ave South portion. Granite Ave North, the current zoning is a six-story maximum, anticipating about 171 potential units there. Now, to increase that density would certainly mean a taller building in Granite Ave North. Increasing it by four stories, so it would be a 10-story max on Two Granite Ave. Granite Ave North would increase the number of units there to 285, but it would result in a decrease on Granite Ave South from a maximum of four and a half stories down to three and a half stories, a reduction of 118 units. So a total reduction of 530 units, Granite Ave South, to 412 units in Granite Ave South. And there are other parameters that might affect that number a little bit more that have already been contemplated in the zoning, too. But that's kind of a broad strokes overview of some adjustments that could be made if there's any interest in that. And I just wanted to report on that, because it's a particular comment that we've been getting, as the board is aware of.
So this is a tweak to that district that could be made, to lower the height on Granite Ave South in exchange for raising the height on Granite Ave North, on the other side of the highway, lowering the number of units on Granite Ave South in exchange for raising the number of units by about 100, lowering it by 118 on Granite Ave South. And then raising it by 100 or so, 114 or so, on the other side of the highway. So that would, so that's, that would be the tweak now. Seems to me, if the members are interested in this, town meeting's next Monday. Not unusual to have an amendment to an article. We could, we don't have an amendment with us tonight. As I understand, this is hard, the press is from the consultants having worked through the numbers to make sure that this all works. But it seems to me, if the board, if the members are interested, we could have an amendment for Monday night and consider it then. So, comments or questions from the members? Mr. Wells.
Do we even have a 10-story building anywhere in this town? Your grin already answers. I just, I mean, part of my thought is that this is kind of a sleight of the hand. You're just moving from one side of the bridge to the other side of the bridge. The other impact is, you know, from a community perspective, when we've already zoned that part of town for, like, if any adult entertainment, anything, whatever, that comes, that's where it has to go. If anyone ever applies to open a marijuana store or a, that has to go. That's the area that we designated to, that Lower Granite Ave. You look it up, it's on there. I just, 700 units is a lot of units to put at that. I mean, Granite Ave is a parking lot every day, North Pond to begin with, never mind 700 units. I mean, what would happen if we even tried to propose a 10-story? But look, look what happened when we tried to put a sign on the park, along the banks of the Pots River, never mind 10 stories. I mean.
The zoning, apparently, according to the consultants, the zoning is, would be allowable. This would be an allowable tweak to the, to the district in order to, it's not really a sleight of hand. It's, you know, changing from one sub-district to another sub-district, right? It's just a.
Same area.
The same area. This sub-district, that, I mean, you can throw a rock.
Absolutely. Some may, some may view it that way. Some may view it as one side of the highway and the other side of the highway. That's, that's how some may view it.
I think the other.
Other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, I can.
Ms. Bradley.
So that area that we're looking at, there is, I believe it's 10 stories, it may only be eight. Close by to there in the Keystone Building, which is a senior housing building, low-income building. I've been there multiple times. I actually thought it was taller than it was. I thought it was 12. But there's a way to go, it's not like everybody from there would be getting onto the highway. There's direct access to the city from that side, which folks could easily access if we were to put another story or a 10-story over on that side of the expressway. I think, you know, for me personally, my gut reaction is I'd rather see a 10-story building next to other buildings that were of the same or comparable height than to see a four and a half, I'd say a five-story building, even though it's technically not, on the side of town where we don't have buildings that high. So for me, it's the lesser of two evils of how to actually comply with this law. So for me, looking at it, it makes way more sense to put another couple stories on a building that's already an industrial-looking building and having it next to other buildings of similar height.
And just to be clear, this is zoning for the building. It's not putting up a building. But anyway. Other comments or questions? Mr. Zoll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I think it's, there's probably some small benefit to doing something like this. I don't think it's going to change significantly, but I do think, you know, another perspective on this is that if you have more folks that are on that side of the highway, then they're that much closer to the Ashmont stop, they're that much closer to shopping and, you know, pedestrian shopping in Adams Village. So I think, you know, from a, from a livability perspective, it might actually be nicer to have more folks over there. And I do think that it would probably lift a little bit of the traffic on the other side of the highway on Granite, because I, you know, I think a lot of people have spent time trying to get on the highway at that point, and there is a little cut-through that you can do through Dorchester to get to Adams and get on the highway there, which would probably be the preferred route for those folks. So I would be in favor of it. I think it's, I think it's a minor tweak, but, you know, I don't think there's a reason to turn down a minor tweak if it makes residents of that area happier and it provides some small benefit. I think we should consider an amendment, and I'd be willing to do that on the 4th.
Other comments or questions?
Just a quick question. Where did this come from? Where were you hearing this from? So tell me where this.
So I'll, I'll tell you about the genesis of this. The genesis of this was when I met on October 30th with three residents of Quetland, this Quetland Circle neighborhood. And, and the question came from them. And so I forwarded the question to Mr. Zawinski and said, is this something that we could, that we could do?
Well, they asked for this.
They didn't, I don't want, I want to make clear, they're not saying that this is something they want. But this is one of the, this was a discussion we had, and they asked whether, and they asked whether this is something we could do, right? I'm not saying that they're happy with this, right? I wouldn't, wouldn't represent that. But this was a question that came out of our discussion on October 30th. I forwarded it to Mr. Zawinski. He's reviewed it with the consultants, and they've come up with this possibility. I then responded to the residents, said, here's what they came up with. And that's, and one of the residents got back to me. So.
Good or bad?
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to, I'll forward it, I'll forward it, I'll forward. I mean, I'll, I mean, the fair, the fair, I'll tell you, it was.
About a normal width.
Well, we don't get into that. 3.5 is certainly better than 4.5, but, you know, they'd rather have it be redone, right? So that was, and I'll forward it to you, but it's just today. So, so that's where it came from. You know, it's, it's a tweak that apparently the consultants have been able to make work, given the calculations and the numbers and the mathematics of all of this. And so the question is, is it something we want to, we want to consider?
Is this the only thing we could do, is to go up to 10? Is there any chance we build a smaller unit building beside it?
So the issue is really, so it's not really about the building. It's on the Granite Ave North parcel is limited on, and on the stories that can go on that parcel. So it could be, how the developer deals with it would be up to them. The challenge was getting something that would result in meaningful change in Granite Ave South. So a couple of stories didn't result in, it might have gone from four and a half stories to four, which in it wasn't really a significant amount of number of units. So to get something where we could say, hey, this goes from four and a half stories to three and a half stories, a tangible reduction, it means four stories at Granite Ave North. That was the trade-off was.
Four more stories of Granite Ave North.
Yeah. So that, it was driven by what can, what can we get that reduces that Granite Ave South number? And the answer was obviously greater density north. And in something that we cut off a full story on Granite Ave South results in four additional stories north. So it's just a trade-off to keep all the other parameters that we have to worry about still checked, where the, where the units are, the 15 units per acre calculation, all that still checks out with this adjustment. And that's, that's where the challenge comes in, is once you start tweaking numbers, you have to worry about all the other metrics that the state makes us hit. This is one that doesn't affect those other metrics, but shifts some of the density around in this area.
Ms. Musto.
Thank you. So it sounds like they just really looked at this area. They didn't look at taking anything off of this particular area into one of the other existing areas.
This was the easiest kind of way to get a quick response to this question of adjusting in this area and keeping it to the districts that have already been described. I think that's the easiest way to explain it.
I will say that the question, the question was, or any other areas in town. To Granite, the question that I, that I asked based on the discussion with the residents was such as Two Granite Ave or any other area of town. So I don't know the extent to which the consultants reviewed everything, but this is what they came back with.
Because it sounds to me, at the end of the day, it's still the same number of units in East Milton, just moving them from one section to another, but it didn't lessen the total number of units, correct?
It's about the same in the Granite Ave North section. In the Granite Ave North and Granite Ave South sub-districts.
Yeah.
That's correct. That's correct. It's taking, it's taking about 118 units from the south and moving it to the other side of the highway and lowering the, lowering the height in the south. Right. And then raising it in the other side of the highway. That's exactly right. Mr. Zoll.
So, Mr. Chair, just, you know, an additional thought on this, and, you know, this is more speculative than anything, but I also wonder if by reducing the height of the Granite Ave South section, I mean, that's state land, and the state can do whatever they want with it at the moment. But if that was zoned that way, it may, it would probably reduce the amount a developer would be willing to pay for it and therefore reduce the state's incentive to potentially sell it to a developer if there would be fewer units that you could put on the parcel. I frankly don't, would be shocked if the DPW ever wanted to let go of that site. I mean, it's right next to 93. They've, you know, it's strategic for them and for a whole host of reasons. But if it made it slightly less attractive to sell, that for me would be another reason to, you know, to consider it.
It's a decrease of, it's a, well, it's a decrease of 108, a decrease of 118 units for those two, for the DPW and the American Legion. And I think the mix is.
It's 368 at DPW going down to 284.
284. So whatever that number is, 284 to 368, I can't do the quick math. And then from American Legion, it's 130 down to 103.
And are we including, in the DPW, you're including both the Park and Ryan lot and the DPW?
That's, yeah, that's what we're referring to.
Which could be either or.
Includes a salt shed, too.
Right. They could keep the salt sheds, and they could keep their operational thing, but they could potentially, in the last time, they were going to give it to us for a dollar. The town was.
And that, but that would be fewer units if they didn't, if they kept the salt shed. That would be fewer units.
So you want a motion?
No. Well, I mean, if, if, if there's a general consensus that we should consider, we don't have an amendment. We should consider an amendment on Monday. I think we should. We'll ask Mr. Milano. And Mr. Zawinski is otherwise occupied tonight. I think they have a meeting. But, but perhaps he could be with us on Monday.
And we'd have a green sheet ready to go, Mr. Chair, do you think?
We'd have to. You know, we did it last year, last spring with the land swap. We did it, you know, right before, so we could do the same, use the same process. We'd probably want to give some heads up. We'd give some heads up to the moderator that this was possible. So, so that's probably the same process we'd use.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not a dramatic change, so I don't think it would-
No, it's, it's clearly within scope. It's just, you know, it's, it's the same district, and it's not creating a new district. It's clearly within scope, but, but, but it is, it is, it is a tweak that, that may be, may be beneficial. So, all right. So we'll, seeing no objection, we'll, we'll have, we'll have, ask that amendment be prepared, and we'll decide on it on Monday. Is that fair? All right. All right. Anything else on the articles? Mr. Milano.
Just an update on Article 7. So the local historic district commish, local historic district study committee, excuse me, held their public hearing on November 21st, November 20th, last Monday in Blute. At that meeting, the chair of the historic district study committee, Larry Lauffer, made a comment that the historic district study committee is not looking for action on this at-town meeting and that they are happy to, to wait until spring. I followed up with Mr. Lauffer today just to confirm that, and that was confirmed by him. So I wouldn't say Article 7 has been formally withdrawn, but they're not anticipating or requesting any action at this time. The Warren Committee did recommend that it would be referred back, but I just wanted to report that information.
All right. So that will, that will make the town meeting move hopefully a little more quickly.
Be done in an hour.
Right, exactly. Any other, anything else on any of the articles? Anything from any of the members on any of the articles? All right.
Let's go. It's 8:52.
All right. Moving along. Item, item eight, discussion approval PFAS settlements with 3M and DuPont. Mr. Milano.
Sure. I don't have a clear recommendation for the board on this, but I'll just kind of give some of the background. As a member of the MWRA, an entity that delivers water to customers, we are included in settlement agreements related to actions brought against 3M and DuPont, related to PFAS in water systems. So there's a, is a dollar amount in the settlements that will be distributed to cities and towns across the United States related to PFAS issues in water and contamination. The MWRA currently is at a level of non-detect or only trace detect on PFAS in its water system, so it is not experiencing some of the PFAS issues that other water suppliers and water districts are facing. The MWRA is intending to opt out of this settlement. Other communities in the MWRA service area are also choosing to opt out. Some other communities are choosing not to opt out. And the way the settlements will work, since we do not pull water out of the ground, we do not treat water, all we do is take MWRA water through our pipes and deliver it to our residents and our customers. We don't experience a PFAS treatment cost because A, we don't treat water in the first place, and B, there is no PFAS issue presently in MWRA water that we are paying for through the MWRA. And the way the settlements work is that if, as a retail customer, we get money from this settlement, we can only use it to the extent that we can show that we are paying for PFAS treatment. That being said, there's not a huge monetary benefit to the Town of Milton as things stand today and under the current regulations and under the current testing that the MWRA has done that could change in the future. So the deadline with, by which we must opt out are, the 3M one is, I think, December 4th, and DuPont is December 11th or vice versa. So they're, they're both coming up. And speaking with town council, his suggestion was that if the board is comfortable with relying on town council's opinion at the end of the day, authorize myself to either opt out or, or stay in based on the recommendation of town council. At this time, his recommendation is to stay in the settlement, but that may change as, as conversations continue. I've reached out to a couple of communities. Chase Berkeley reached out to a couple of communities just to get a lay of the land, and council has been in touch with council and other communities as well to, to understand this process a little better. But that's kind of the broad strokes. Happy to answer any questions if there are any on this.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wells.
Do we know what Boston and Quincy are doing?
Chase was reaching out that they are planning to, Boston is, don't know yet on Quincy.
Okay.
Is staying in?
Planning to opt out.
Opting out. Okay.
Are this mentioned because they're two of the bigger, they're my neighbors, and they're both Randolph's, not Cannon, but-
And another community, another large community is planning to stay in based on a conversation between, with council. So it's kind of a mixed bag right now, and, you know, town council's been in touch with MWRA's council to talk about it as well. So just trying to pull, peel back the layers a little bit more and understand it greater as, as the week progresses, and we, and we approach that December 4th deadline.
Mr. Wells.
So this, this apply, would apply more to a community that's not an MWRA, that maybe is an independent water, a cup, where this is a way bigger issue than it is for us.
Yep. I get it. And our, the Town of Milton's share of any PFAS treatment cost will be more limited because we're part of a bigger entity.
Right.
Whereas, you know, XYZ town, it's a bit smaller. $20 million for a treatment plant is a big issue for a community like that, whereas as one small part of a bigger entity, that, that cost is moderated, and that's one of the benefits of our membership in that group.
And so does the amount of the communities that opt out, does that go to the communities that remain? Did they get a bigger piece of it, I think?
They're treated entirely separately. So if we stayed in and MWRA was out, MWRA would not get money for Milton's water. Milton would get its money for its water. But if we don't have treatment costs by which to claim payment for, we will, we won't see any of it anyway.
Okay. So we're not voting tonight on anything, are you taking it?
Yeah.
But we could make a motion to-
Yeah. Yeah, I was just gonna say, since the deadline is December 4th for DuPont, seems to me, seems to me we'd have to, we, we either have to meet before December 4th or we'd have to authorize either, well, we, number of things we could do. We could decide to opt out or stay in, right? We could authorize the town administrator, based on the advice of town council, to opt out or stay in on DuPont. 3M, the deadline is December 11th, so we could conceivably authorize DuPont, get an update on the 11th, and then decide what to do on the 11th for 3, I mean, I'm sorry, decide what to do on the 4th for 3M.
So you ready? Want to make a motion to select item B?
So that would be, that would be authorize, authorize town administrator to, to opt out or stay in based on the advice of town council with respect to the DuPont settlement.
Only, that's it.
Only.
I'll second.
Motion's been made, made and seconded. Other comments or questions? All right. All is in favor?
Aye.
So, so, so you've got the authority on DuPont, and then if we could get an update on the 4th-
Sure.
And then we can make a decision on 3M, seems to me, on the 4th.
Could be option A on that night.
Could be option A. Could be option A. All right. Anything else on this?
That's it.
All right. Item-
I'll just clarify. This is only for drinking water. PFAS issues and wastewater may turn out to be another issue down the road. This addresses just the drinking water side of, of that relationship.
Right. Because, you know, wastewater is a totally different animal than drinking water, right?
All right. Anything else? Item, and actually, it wasn't 8:52. It was only 7:52.
That's what I meant. I meant, say what I did to you.
You made me, you made me think you're a lot farther along, so we're doing okay. Item, item 10, no, item nine, sorry. Item nine, discussion approval letter to the EPA and Mass DEP regarding comments on draft permit, draft permit number. This is the Deer Island Treatment Plant Permit. Mr. Milano, do you want to lead us through this?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. This is a draft letter with comments related to this permit, which I described briefly in our last meeting. The broad, again, this is related to MWRA as we're an entity involved with MWRA. They're going through permitting process for the Deer Island Wastewater Treatment Plant. The EPA has added some, added one condition and changed one dynamic of this permit that MWRA and its member communities are having an issue with. First, in terms of planning around potential environmental impacts, they're requesting action be done within a year in MWRA, and its advisory board felt that that was too onerous of a timeline to meet, and they're asking for that to be met within more of a three-year timeline, if it's going to be applied at all. And then the, the more pertinent concern is that Milton is being named, along with all the other members of the MWRA system, as co-permittees, even though at the end of the day, we don't have control over the system. It's an MWRA facility. We pay the MWRA, but it's, it's up to them to operate it. And if, if they're not abiding by the permit, that's out of our control, and it's something that we could be held liable for if we remain permittees, co-permittees in the permit. So those are the, those are the comments that are being sent in by both other communities in the MWRA area, as well as the MWRA advisory board on this permit, and hoping for some changes as, as this approaches final permit status.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Comments or questions from the members? Let me, let me just ask, on page four, it says, we're going to include Section 2, which relates to the sanitary sewer community co-permittee. I assume that will be included because we are co-permittee?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll just take out that, those brackets. Take out that, that reference, right? So, so the idea here is, our, our concerns here are the additional substantial costs that are possible under, under this, this draft permit to the town in the event that they, because, because we are labeled a co-permittee, we could have substantial additional costs based on the, based on the permit for Deer Island.
Correct.
Other comments or questions? Or motions?
I make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve a letter to the EPA and Mass DEP protection regarding comments on draft permit number MA 0103284.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Milano. Item 11, right? No.
10.
Sorry. Item 10, item 10 will be deferred. The school building committee, because of a, a posting issue, did not meet last night, so we'll be meeting tomorrow night on this request for services, and we'll have a recommendation on Monday, the 4th. So that will be deferred. So item 11, requirement that the select board subcommittees and select board appointed boards and committees allow minimum 10 minutes per public comment at each meeting. I think this is Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I had proposed that going forward, that we should consider allowing a minimum of 10 minutes available for residents who want to speak at any of our meetings. I think it's a good thing to do for public process. You know, many meetings, we have people attend, and oftentimes, they may or may not want to even participate, but it's a good option. And I think it would be good, where we're talking about transparency and getting public input on things, to allow for something like that on our committees. So that would apply to all the committees, the subcommittees. And again, I, I don't think we'll really ever run over that amount of time, but if we put it as a minimum, it allows a little leniency. It doesn't mean necessarily you would have one person speak for that amount of time, but you would allow a public process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Comments or questions? Mr. Zoll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Musto, I think this is a great idea. Just a quick question. If typically, I know we allow three minutes per speaker, and so I'm wondering if 10 doesn't, three doesn't go into 10 evenly, and so I'm wondering if we want to make it either a multiple of three or if we want to, say, set a different limit for, on the speaking time.
I mean, I haven't thought about that piece. I thought about allowing a minimum of 10 minutes. So, you know, maybe somebody's speaking and it's three minutes, but, you know, they want to go a little bit longer. You might give them a little leniency if, if you don't have a lot of people waiting to speak. So I think it's up to, you know, judgment of the chair on those kind of situations as well. And again, 10 would be the minimum, you know, and I don't think, for many of the meetings that I've gone to, I'd be surprised if we really have a lot of people that want to speak.
Ooh. Is that me?
That's me. That's me.
Ms. Bradley.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. So my concern would be given the recent SJC ruling and making sure that everything was standardized so that we weren't opening up ourselves to a lawsuit from a resident of the town. My suggestion would be for Ms. Musto to bring this to the Public Policy Committee of the Select Board, and we could take a look at it there and really flesh out exactly what this would mean for, for the town, because there does have to be some guidelines. It can't just be a minimum of 10 minutes. There's no maximum here. The maximum can be the concern of the chair, which could let one person speak for 45 minutes. So I think that really because of that SJC ruling and because of what has been really instructed down from them by the cities, to cities and towns, is that we have to take that ruling seriously and really make sure that we are being equal to all citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. And if it went to policy committee, we actually could have a kind of a written, maybe a paragraph, written policy, but then that might, that might be useful. Mr. Wells?
So I'm just thinking of one committee that I sit on where they try to do it in 60 minutes. So taking more than 10 minutes in an hour would be really tough. Would really-
Right.
The capital that it's, because they try to do it in 60 minutes. We do it early in the morning so people can go to work. More than 10 minutes would really cramp it. Not that we get, I can't even think of a resident ever coming, but-
But you never know.
You don't.
Ms. Musto.
Sure. I mean, I think it's just an idea of how you could, could do it, and, you know, maybe you max it at, at 10 or 15 minutes and, you know, allow a few minutes per person. So I think there are ways to do it, just so it wouldn't eat up all of the time of the work of the committee, but there'd be, you know, an opportunity for people to weigh in.
Does it make sense to-
Sure.
Have, go to the policy committee and then maybe come up with something we could vote on, and it makes sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't need a motion for that.
No, no. I think, I think we got it. I think we got a consensus on that. All right. Thank you, Ms. Musto, for that. Item 12, use of the, and we are cruising.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to help you.
Use of the Baron Zibo, Baron Hugo gazebo, Baron-
So here we go. So this motion is going to be to allow the use of the Baron Hugo gazebo on the town green and these other dates and the events. Sunday, December 3rd, 2023, Annual Marine Corps Toys for Tots Drive sponsored by Francine Jeffers and Kelly and Regie Properties. Friday, December 8th, 2023, Holiday Memorial Tree Program and Lighting Ceremony sponsored by the Milton Rotary Club and annual event.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. All right. Item-
Here we go. 13.
13.
So this is going to be approval for one-day gluck licenses at the location Historic New England Eustace Estate, 1424 Cantav. One, Christmas tea with champagne toast, Sunday, December 3rd, 2023, from 3:00 to 5:00. Two, Christmas cheers, Thursday, December 7th, 2023, from 7:00 to 9:00. Three, Christmas cheers, Thursday, December 14th, 2023, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Four, Christmas tea with champagne toast, Sunday, December 17th, 2023, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Five, Christmas tea with champagne toast, Monday, December 18th, 2023, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And six, Christmas tea with champagne toast, Tuesday, December 19th, 2023, from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Oh, Mr. Zoll.
Just quickly, I just want to put a plug in. If you haven't been to the Eustace Estate during the holiday season, it's absolutely gorgeous. Please check it out. And if they've got champagne, all the better.
Thank you, Mr. Zoll, for a very critical comment. All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Item 14, discussion approval, meeting minutes for October 10, 2023, and October 14, 2023.
It's 24.
20, 23. Oh, October 24th, 2023. Sorry.
I'll make a motion.
I ask that we take them separately, please?
Sure. So take them separately. Discussion on October 10th, the October 10th minutes.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 10th, 2023.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
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 I have to abstain.
And abstention, abstention by Ms. Bradley. So the vote is 4-0-1.
So I'll make a mo, oh, go ahead. Do you want to?
No, go ahead.
So I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, on October 24th, 2023, to approve the minutes, the meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. All right. Item 15, which is the town administrator's report. Mr. Milano.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of MTA communities, updates. There is a planning board meeting tonight. If you're watching us, you're missing that one. Sorry. On Thursday-
But we're going to be done sooner.
That's right.
Thursday, in conflict with Milton High School football, unfortunately, the planning department is hosting a final forum on MTA communities prior to town meeting. We've, we've reached out to town meeting members directly on this. It's posted on our website. It's open to everybody, but we did reach out to town meeting members directly for this last forum, so they can hear about it, ask questions- members directly for this last forum so they can hear about it, ask questions, and I know the planning department's already been receiving questions and phone calls based on that outreach, which is good. On town meeting member communications, we finalized all of our forms to start collecting information from town meeting members, to collect emails and put that together. So that is, will begin tomorrow. Not quite on target in terms of being ready for this town meeting at this point, but it will be in place moving forward. Tree lighting is this weekend, so everybody remembers. Stroll music treats at East Milton, 3:00 to 5:00. Make your own s'mores, that's Dylan and Ry from 3:30 to 4:30. This is on Saturday. Santa should arrive around 5:00 for the tree lighting. The tree will be delivered and installed on Thursday, and this has been a, a wide effort of a number of entities, of which we are very grateful, Hunt Tree Company, Driscoll Landscaping, Thayer Nursery, and Anthony Musto, so appreciate their work and all the volunteers and others behind the scenes.
What was that name? What was that last name?
Anthony Musto. So, it, you know, DPW's been down there stringing lights as well. Takes a lot of help to get this done, so we're grateful for everybody's efforts. And just a small little plug, we have installed some water bill, bottle filling stations in town hall. They are now live, so some exciting news for us. Small, small project, but we'll take it.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. So item 16 is the chair's report. So the opposing viewpoint for Thursday night is the Milton High School Wildcats are in the Super Bowl and there is a community pep rally that is before the town meeting, town meeting presentation at 5:00 at Milton High School Community Pep Rally to get ready for, and that'll be the Super Bowl sendoff for the Super Bowl for the Milton High School Wildcats, so...
At Gillette.
Yes, first, well, first at the high school for the pep rally and then the high, and then the game is, and then the game follows at Gillette Stadium in Foxborough. So, so go to the pep rally and, and then go to the town meeting thing and we'll listen in on the, on the Super Bowl. Second, we, we have a signed agreement from the Copeland Family Foundation, funding agreement for the animal shelter, which this board had approved previously, it's now been signed, so thank you to the Copeland Family Foundation. We're now full speed ahead on the animal shelter project, so hopefully that will be a huge benefit going forward. Item 17, public comment response. Did we didn't, did we have public comment?
We don't have any.
We didn't have any public comments, so. Item 18, future meeting dates. We have the 4th, the 11th, we have the 12th, if, so these are all town meeting nights, 4th, 11th, and 12th, and then Tuesday, the 19th would be our next regular meeting. Any, Mr. Zoll?
Mr. Chair, I was hoping to add this to the, to your chair's report.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Zoll.
Just as an FYI, there is a menorah lighting that's happening in Quincy at the Hancock Green, Thursday, December 7th, 2023, 4:45 p.m. That, sorry, it's called the Hancock Adams Comment.
Yes.
And our, our own Rabbi Benjamin is going to be presiding. It will be the first candle on the menorah for the first night of Hanukkah.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Zoll. Thank you for that.
That park is directly in front of City Hall.
All right, future meeting dates, any comments on future meeting dates? What time, oh, good question. Monday, December 4th. Town meeting is, is, well, we may have a couple of things. We have that letter, we have the report on DuPont, so 6:30 might be, give us a little more, 6:30 might give us just a little more time if we can do it. So I would suggest 6:30 for that night, just given, given that it's the first night of town meeting and, and we do have that 3M, we'll have that 3M vote as well, so.
And possibly.
And possibly an amendment, so. So I would suggest 6:30, but obviously it's a pleasure of the members.
I'm comfortable with 6:30.
6:30, right? All right, so 6:30 on Monday, December 4th, and then we'll, we'll take, we'll, we'll, we'll figure out Monday, December 11th if and when, if and when it looks like we're going to have to do that, I guess, unless anyone wants to set a time for Monday, December 11th as well.
Could I have a clarifying question?
Yes, Ms. Bradley.
I'm sorry, if there is no, I'm being optimistic, if there's no special town meeting scheduled for the 12th of December, we don't meet then. We would, our next meeting would be the 19th, correct?
That's right.
So we potentially could have the 12th off?
Yes.
We could have the 12th.
Wouldn't that be...
And I think it's, I think it's, I'm hoping it's very likely that we'll have the 12th off.
Okay, great.
But, but we'll see.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure I got that right.
Yep, absolutely. That's a town meeting that night, so.
There was a statement too, you know.
Yes, it was a statement and a question.
I read that, I just want to make sure you did.
Yes, yes, no, I, I may not have got it now, I may have gotten it tomorrow. Didn't get it just now, but I may have gotten it tomorrow.
Mr. Chair, just to kind of stick on a December schedule for the time being, so if that scenario does play out, we meet as regular on December 12th. I, I mean, at that point, I would anticipate not meeting again in the month of December as long as everybody's okay with that.
Wait, that's if the, we have a town meeting.
If, if town meeting is done and we have a regular select board meeting December 12th.
It's the second Tuesday is the 12th.